Go ahead and get started with our October 14th meeting after our roll call.
Bielsa, Kaufman Gomez.
Present.
Dodge.
Here.
Hernandez, Hurst, Montesino, Cervantes.
Here. Our first item is our consent agenda, and all items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions which are considered to be routine. There is an opportunity for any members of the public wishing to address us on any item currently listed under our consent agenda.
Community Bridges, and I'm here to talk about 4.4, and just wanted to talk about how Community Bridges is really in support and recommends the increase in the staff report for the hourly living wage code. And I hope that the council continues to grapple with the impact that this may have on other city contractors and to the social service sector, and also that it consider itself that this not just be a unfunded mandate, that this also serve as a cause to continue also ensuring that the subcontractors such as nonprofit organizations are also taking this into light.
Thank you. Sure, I'll wait and see if other members of the public wish to address us on any items on our consent agenda. Seeing none, I'll return this to council for questions or appropriate motion. Councilmember Dodge?
The microphone.
Hold on, that's true. I'll get there by 6:30 though. Also, first of all, I haven't met the new CEO, so I was hoping you'd take a moment to introduce yourself, but I'd like to make the motion to be able to approve the consent agenda.
I'd like to second that.
Motion by councilmember Dodge and a second by councilmember Montesino. Discussion, councilmember Dodge?
I just, I think that item 4.6 allows us to be more in line with the wages for our employees, and I'm happy to support that, and I look forward to us moving forward with our employees and recognizing all that they do for the city of Watsonville, and I'm really excited about supporting item 4.6.
Thank you. Councilmember Trina Kaufman Gomez?
Yes, I just want to make sure that I, we do proper acknowledgement for Rose Marie, who is part of our consent agenda, for the approval for the PVWMA because of how many years of service and dedication she's given to our community on behalf of PVWMA and the representation. The other item I just want to make sure I've had a comment on as well is, we're going back on the general plan here. It is something that we will be revisiting again and spending more time on with regarding the corrections, modifications that are going to come as the process comes in, for the council to be up to speed on the changes and the recommendations based on those proceedings. So while we are putting this through on consent, please let the voice be heard that it doesn't mean that it's going away, and it doesn't mean that we're not listening. It does mean that we want to do what we can to be proactive in working something that's effectively to make this a success on moving this forward in terms of our 2030 general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, questions, or discussion from council, we will go ahead and do a roll call.
Kaufman Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes?
Yes. So moving forward on our new business, we do have a presentation on the Sanctuary Scenic Trail Master Plan. Hi, how are you?
Good evening, members of the city council. Mayor Cervantes, I'm Murray Fontz. I'm principal engineer with the Public Works and Engineering, Public Works and Utilities Department, and I'm pleased to be here this evening with Corey Coletti of the Regional Transportation Commission to make a presentation concerning the council approval of the Santa Cruz County Regional Transportation Commission Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Master Plan. I'm going to invite Corey to address the council and speak about the master plan itself. Let me say with regards to Corey's background, she's been the primary person at the Regional Transportation Commission to shepherd this plan through, and I don't think there's anybody more qualified to present or to answer questions on it than she is. Corey?
Thank you, Murray. Good evening, councilmembers. I do know a lot about this project, and Murray has advised me to reel in my enthusiasm and not give you the two-hour tutorial, but to stick to seven minutes or less. So that's what I'm going to try to do. So I am here to present highlights of our Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Master Plan, give you a little background on its development, and talk about where we're at today and our next steps. We're really enthused at your support of this master plan. We've won a number of awards already on it, and we're really excited about it serving as the guiding document to implement this project into the future. As you know, trail, bicycle and pedestrian projects, trail projects in particular, really expand our transportation options. They incentivize getting around by bicycle and by walking for people with all sorts of mobility ranges. When we purchased the rail line, we intended to expand transportation options, including bicycle and pedestrian use as well as passenger and freight rail service. The 50-mile Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Network is, it's a broad project. It really, it identifies the 32-mile rail corridor as the spine of the project, but it also looks at other connections in order to serve the key destinations that we have identified as being within one mile of the tracks, namely half the county's population, 44 schools, and 92 parks. We are really hoping that we'll be able to construct significant sections of the project within 10 years, and we have funded three miles already. The total estimated cost is $127 million. In large part, that's due to the fact that there are a lot of bridges, a lot of crossings. Rail corridors are really great for trails adjacent to them because the gradient is so gentle, making it really accessible for almost everyone. However, that means a lot of bridges to smooth out the topography. This is a two-county project. It connects to Monterey County's system of trails and intends to arc the Monterey Bay. Sam Farr, Congressman Sam Farr, has been this project's biggest champion and secured millions of dollars in federal funds. His original vision was to highlight the National Marine Sanctuary and to do that through active transportation options. We developed this master plan within certain constraints, namely maintaining property, private property rights, maintaining rail service operations, and protecting agricultural operations. We went through a two-and-a-half-year planning process. We had a number of stakeholder meetings, technical workshops, public workshops, your public work staff, planning staff. You know, we had a very engaged process, and the master plan was adopted after that two-and-a-half-year process. And we also, at the same time, certified an environmental impact report which will enable us to streamline environmental clearance in the future. The master plan defines the goals, the trail alignment. It offers design features. We identified cost estimates that your city staff was able to utilize when submitting a grant application. We presented operation and maintenance scenarios, some implementation objectives, and we asked at the end of that process that the county of Santa Cruz, the city of Capitola, Santa Cruz, and Watsonville consider adoption of the project as well, of the master plan. The Santa Cruz Transportation Commission is the legal lead agency and bears the obligations associated with that act. So the act of the cities and the county adopting the master plan is really symbolic to show support, and it doesn't actually bear any legal obligations. The trail network, we divided it into 20 segments so that we could have logical projects with independent utility basically that could be constructed over time. In some instances, there's only a portion of a project that can be constructed at one time because of various constraints, maybe bridges or cost. So we really tried to allow for the variety of implementation mechanisms that we could. We identified the type of facilities that this would encompass. There's the rail trail, of course. There's an existing rail trail, a depot park in the city of Santa Cruz that you can see a photograph of right there, and we have the, some natural surface paths and boardwalks to access the coast or to mitigate impacts on environmentally sensitive habitats. We also provided trail features and amenities, benches, fencings, signs, the bridges and trailheads. Those aren't really amenities, they're not really optional, but they went under that category. Fencing, one of the things to note about the master plan, and it is available on our website, so you're welcome to download it, and we're also happy to give you hard copies if you would like, is we try to not make it prescriptive at all. So we offered a lot of options. So you see a couple of different trail fencing types with different varying degrees of security, and that's intended so that some areas, like neighborhoods, don't want, you know, an obstruction, you know, visual obstruction, or don't feel the need for high security, whereas in other areas where the rail trail will abut industrial operations or agriculture, more safety, heightened safety features will be desired by the community. So it's all meant to be determined on a segment-by-segment basis. We make recommendations about what we think is appropriate for each segment, if anything out of the ordinary is, should be considered, but we, we, we aren't prescribing those. So where are we now? We allocated 5.6 million that we had in funding through Congressman Farr's efforts and through RTC's obligations. Three coastal rail trail segments have been funded. One on-road bike pet improvement have been funded, has been funded, and we've asked the local public works departments to take the lead in building the projects. We ourselves don't have public works capabilities, so for the short term, we're really looking to the local jurisdictions to take the lead until we can get up to speed to, in construction management duties. And we identified other implementation scenarios, like, you know, as I just mentioned, the RTC, or state parks, or other entities. You can see the city of Watsonville segment right here, the population within a mile of the tracks that it would serve, the number of schools and parks that would access, and the anticipated construction date. What we are going to be doing next is really looking at seeking more funding, state and federal funds, as well as eventually bringing a sales tax measure to Santa Cruz County voters. And that's a critical piece of this, that the trail project will get built if we have funding. Current funding is really unreliable and insufficient. Eighty-five percent of the state taxes themselves so as to have local revenues for transportation projects. We're going to be looking at bringing a measure to the November 2016 ballot, and we look forward to working with the city of Watsonville to craft a transportation package that voters are likely to support. We're also working with local organizations, agencies, to develop private funding partnerships. The Land Trust of Santa Cruz County, as you might know, has agreed to match, to provide matching funds to the city of Watsonville to the tune of $260,000 to construct Segment 18. Friends of the Rail Trail and People Power are very active in the community in providing advocacy, education, outreach, and doing segment fundraising. We have other partners, the Coastal Conservancy, Caltrans, the Bureau of Land Management, that are all coming together to work on this project through rail trail work groups and collaborations. And then what we need to do is to firm up these collaborations through agreements, and one of the agreements will be for trail implementation, the construction and ongoing maintenance. Obviously, there's cost sharing that needs to be addressed and liability, and all of those kind of details will be developed and negotiated for an MOU to be signed that is agreeable to all parties. We'll be engaging in that effort with the city of Watsonville, city of Santa Cruz, the county of Santa Cruz in the short term. And I know I went over my seven minutes by about two, but still under 10. So I think that I should hand it over to Murray at this point for him to fill in any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you.
In the meantime, you get to see my notes that remind me to introduce myself and who I am, in case I completely freeze.
Thank you, Corey. I would like to now address how the city will benefit from the work that the RTC has done and by approving the master plan. The city has an extensive trail network already in place. About 15 years ago, the city took it upon itself to create trails throughout the sloughs and has become somewhat of a pioneer within the county on trail network development. This was put into a Trails Master Plan that was adopted by council in 2012. This master plan not only showed the trails that have already been developed, but also projected another 26 miles to be incorporated into the city and outside of city limits. Included in that master plan was what is known as the rail trail. This slide is taken from the city's Trails Master Plan, and if you look carefully, the black line running through the center noted as 11.2 is the rail trail. So the city has already incorporated this master plan, at least the portion within city limits and adjacent, into its own Trails Master Plan. Trail development, including assisting with the development of the master plan, is in alignment with the strategic goals that the council has adopted. The first goal is to protect public safety. Many of you have witnessed how the existing trails allow pedestrians and bicyclists to travel throughout the city without going on a roadway. The second strategic plan goal is to promote economic development. An example would be the recent Monterey Bay Birding Festival, which takes advantage of the numerous slough trails that weave their ways throughout this unique benefit that the city has and has created an opportunity for Watsonville to promote ecotourism. Goal number three is to reduce reliance on reserve funds. As Corey pointed out, the city of Watsonville has received funding for the rail trail project on Lee Road, including the $1.04 million that was provided through a grant of the Regional Transportation Commission, the $260,000 from the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County, as well as funds that are being, that have been raised by FORT, or Friends of the Rail Trail, to not only assist with this project, but also with another segment of the rail trail. The fourth goal is to improve communications. This is an example of an article that was posted on the KALN News Network regarding a grant that the city received for wetlands project and trail development. What better news is there than that? The city's getting money to develop trails. And it enhances the community image. Certainly with the birding festival and the numerous visitors who come into the city to use the trails, all eyes are on Watsonville and the development of the trails within the city as well as the master plan for the rail trail. Staff recommendation, all aboard for the rail trail. That concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, do you have any questions on the presentation? Councilmember Kaufman Gomez?
You mentioned about bringing a tax measure November 2016. Can you give us a little bit more elaboration about what that is about since we've already passed one and people are going to be very sensitive?
It's, we're really in the very early stages of exploring this possibility. Our executive director is reaching out to the local municipalities and community leaders to see what kind of support there is for a measure, what interest there is in terms of the split, the project split, how much for highway, how much for the trail. So it's really, it's something that's in the very early stages, and we, we are going to be working with the city of Watsonville to develop that further and receive your input.
Is there a dollar amount in mind that they're looking to work through this process?
There is a dollar in mind, a dollar figure in mind, and I don't have the spreadsheet in front of me. We'd be happy to forward that to you. It's really, it's just a draft at this point. It's just being vetted around the community. I'd be happy to share it with you. I just don't have it on hand.
And I just have one more comment, and I will be finished. I just want to say that I was really pleased to hear some of the public comments about this, that were getting to support this, which have come from North County. So I just wanted to make sure that you're aware that it's nice to hear that even the support of North County for something that's coming down on the south end will be an encouragement to also attract them to come down in our area and be part of expanding and tourism and whatever we're doing down in this area as well. So that was good to see. Thank you.
Councilmember Dodge?
I want to thank you for being here this evening. Ms. Coletti makes presentations to the most political board in the county, which is even a little rougher than this Watsonville City Council on occasion. So I doubt you'd be shaken up in front of a bunch of teddy bears like us. I asked for this item to be put on the agenda because I really feel that, that we needed to bring it, bring it home, that we really be able to, as a council, look at it and support it. It's good for, we talked about, to be able, the scenic, the scenic trail has been, as you said, a process for 10 years. With, as myself and, and the chair of the Regional Transportation Commission currently is sitting to my left, and you. And we've been able to secure quite a bit of funding over, over $2 million, almost close to $1.5 million, to be able to, to move this forward, and I want to thank you for coming this evening and allowing our community to be able to see what it is that affects us directly here in the Poharo Valley. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, thanks. Councilmember Montesino?
And I also want to restate that, all these efforts that we have come through, the Regional Transportation Commission has come through collaboration with all agencies because it's a county-wide effort. City of Santa Cruz, city of Watsonville, Capitola, everybody's been engaged. Everybody sees, sees this as, as a very positive thing for the community, and it's, and it's going to be futuristic for, and not other communities in, in the country have the potential that we have and the beauty that we have. So we got to enjoy it, and it's going to be for our future, and it's going to be for our kids.
Thank you. This is an opportunity as well for members of the public wishing to provide input on the Scenic Trail Master Plan. If there's anybody wishing to, you can approach the microphone, just state your name, also where you reside.
Hello, my name is Amelia Conlin. I'm the director of People Power, and we're Santa Cruz County's advocate for better bicycling, and I live in Santa Cruz. And I'm here to support the adoption of the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Master Plan. The Sanctuary Scenic Trail is our highest advocacy priority, and it has the potential to transform the county by providing a safe place to bike and walk. The 32-mile coastal rail trail will connect Watsonville with Capitola, Aptos, and Santa Cruz, making bike commuting between cities a safe and more comfortable option. And who knows, if traffic is bad, it might even be faster. The trail will also be a significant draw for tourism, bring increased economic activity, and improve the safety of the currently unused rail line. Adopting the master plan is a first step towards getting this project built, and I ask you to adopt it today and to make it a priority for future funding and construction. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to address us on this issue? Seeing none, I will return this to council for discussion. Councilmember Dodge?
I'd like to make a motion, adopt the, to support staff recommendation on a resolution adopting the master plan for the Monterey Bay Sanctuary Scenic Trail Network as prepared by the Regional Transportation Commission of Santa Cruz County.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on the motion?
Just really briefly, again, I really like to think that, we're going to hear a variety of different subjects throughout the night, and I think that this is really something that Watsonville can be very proud of. We've, it's really historical because the goal is to have this trail go all the way around the Monterey Bay and to be able to interconnect, so one doesn't need a car to be able to get from one end of the bay to the other, although that walk would probably kill me. So, but I really think that it's very forward-thinking, and I want to thank staff, Watsonville city staff, for pointing out how our rail trails interconnect with this. We talked about being, offering, increasing tourism to our area. This is very vital to, to that prospect, and I'm really excited about us going forward in that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Dodge, councilmember Dodge, which hat are you wearing right now?
They always ask me that.
We really appreciate your support. This is a really far-reaching project, so broad coalitions and partnerships are really going to be essential, and I do want to commend your staff for being on the front end of implementation because they came forward on the first round of applications, and there are some growing pains involved. So we're very appreciative of your staff and your council support.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kaufman Gomez?
It's certainly a positive direction for a 2030 plan, and I'm pleased to see that we're doing something that is proactive. We can all get on board and agree with and move forward, knowing it's good progress for the community.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Hernandez?
You know, I also look forward to this project. I do use a portion of it, the one that starts from Ford and Kearney to Aloney. It's a lot of, lot of pet owners actually use the rail, the trail around that area, too. I got two pets. I usually walk them around there, and they love it. So I look forward to the extension. You mentioned a connection to Monterey. How's, where's that going to come from, by the way?
That's a good question. So it's, the plan right now is to meet at Therwater Bridge and through an on-road connection. So there would have to be divergent, divergence from the rail line because it starts moving inland towards the city of Watsonville at a certain inland towards the city of Watsonville at a certain point, and the connection will be sort of closer to, to the coast. So the master plan proposes on-road connections at Therwater Bridge, which is off of Beach Street. Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, there is a motion before us, and I think that we're ready to vote. Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Montesino?
Yes.
Cervantes? Yes, and the motion is, moves forward. Thank you.
Oh, I'm bored.
That's right.
Choo-choo.
Some more good things happening in Watsonville. We have a presentation by our Parks and Community Services Director, Anna Espinosa, discussing a possible feasibility study for the renovations of Ramsey Park.
Good afternoon, Mayor Cervantes and members of the council and members of the public. Anna Espinosa, Director for Parks and Community Services Department. This afternoon, staff is requesting that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing appropriation of $52,000 from the Park Impact Fee Fund to conduct a feasibility study for the renovation of Ramsey Park's Otomayor Soccer Field. As a way of background, the Ramsey Soccer Field is located at 1301 Main Street. This is an aerial photograph of Ramsey Park. And outlined in red is the current soccer field. The soccer field currently allows for two youth fields and one adult, and it is the city's sole official-sized soccer field. Moreover, the existing soccer field consists of natural grass, which requires a high level of maintenance, such as mowing, irrigation, reseeding, aerating, and fertilizing. And for example, the field is available approximately 180 days a year. It is closed on Mondays and Tuesdays and during the winter months as well, as I mentioned, due to maintenance required. Due to the lack of current lighting, the field's only usable during the daytime. The soccer field is highly utilized during the available times, and this department is unable to meet the current demand and need for use of the field for practices and, and for games. The city's youth soccer league extensively uses the field, and over 500 youth participate in our program throughout the year. And the youth are from ages six to 13. And recently, with our affiliation with the Puma, Club Pumas of the Universidad Nacional Autónoma from Mexico, we have actually seen an increase of over 94 new registered participants that are playing in our summer league, for example. And the soccer field is also currently used by community adult leagues, and as you can see, over 480 adults use the soccer field as well. Renovating the soccer field would improve the quality of the field by providing a consistent quality playing surface for, and also hopefully provide less maintenance and will increase the use of the field by what we believe to be over 50%. Conducting a feasibility study would serve as an effective planning tool to evaluate the field for conversion of artificial turf and for installing lights. The feasibility study would include a comprehensive site analysis that would consist of geotechnical investigation, grading, identification of storm drain, and drainage improvements that may be required. Equally important, the feasibility study would allow the city to develop a design with the input from the community, a site plan, and construction cost estimates. The information acquired through this effort would guide the city's work in renovating the soccer field. As part of the city's public input process, two workshops would be conducted to engage the community in helping design an improved soccer field for the community. It's important to note that on June 24, 2014, the city council directed staff to explore the sale of the Buena Vista property with the proceeds to be deposited in the Park Impact Fee Fund for future improvements of the Ramsey Soccer Field. This served as the first step towards the city's effort to advance its intended goal of improving an existing sports field, and the recommendation before you this afternoon further advances this effort. Thus, in conclusion, it is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution authorizing an appropriation of $52,000 from the Park Impact Fee Fund to conduct a feasibility study for the renovation of the Ramsey Park's Otomayor Soccer Field. That concludes my brief report.
Thank you. Councilmember Montesino?
So I got a question. So if we approve this, when would the feasibility study come back to us?
We would proceed within the next month or so to request a proposal for a landscape architect to help us with this work. It'll include some consultants in various fields, electrical engineers, for example, the geotech firms, so we would need to pursue that work shortly upon approval by the city council.
So when do you envision it coming back?
I would, it might be in November, the first meeting in November is my estimation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez?
I do have a few questions for you. You're saying that we're looking at about a 50% increase in usage, and what income will we get after the 50% increase in usage? Anything we're getting from agencies, organizations?
Currently, we, the adult leagues do rent our soccer field, and so we could increase the revenues that we bring in from that amount.
So additional leagues for the, for the income?
And even our own leagues that the city operates, the more teams that we can enroll in our program. We do charge a fee per player. Therefore, we would have more players and, and increase revenue to help.
The player revenue, the, what do we currently have in our impact fund on this right now?
In the Park Impact Fee Fund, there's $138,000 that's available, and this feasibility study would cost $52,000.
And I believe that the last time you came, the project itself, the projection was about a $1.6 million project, so we're feasibility for the approximately $1.6 million, of which we're going to be using the proceeds from the Buena Vista sale. What progress have we made in terms of that occurring?
With the sale of the Buena Vista property, we actually conducted a property appraisal. So we have information that the city can utilize to move forward with, with the sale of the property.
So we would still need to have that sold with cash in hand before we do anything with this feasibility and implementation of it?
Yes, that's correct. These funds would help build our pool of funds that would help renovate the, the soccer field. The $1.6 million that you've mentioned is a very preliminary amount that staffed required from initial research, but the feasibility study would really allow us to determine what would more concrete cost, so that we can more effectively plan for that.
And are we anticipating the sale projection to be half of what our cost is, perhaps? I think the last notes I had was about six and a quarter for the value of that property. I, I don't know if we have any numbers to give for the appraisal on that yet.
We're thinking it'll be in the range of a million dollars, perhaps, somewhere between $800,000 to a million dollars.
That's better than what we've done for the length of time we've owned the property anyway. So with a feasibility study, we would still have it subject to the sale of the property, and then that would bring in the majority of the revenue, it sounds like, or a very good amount of it. And what would you anticipate the difference coming from?
The difference would be looking at some foundation support. I've had just very preliminary discussions with a pretty large foundation, so I want to further engage them in discussion with more information that would become available as a result of feasibility study. And I've also have talked to at least one community philanthropist who may be interested in helping support.
Sounds like good progress. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll open up the opportunity for members of the public wishing to address us on the feasibility study of the Ramsey Park Soccer Field. Seeing none, I'll return this to council for additional discussion or appropriate motion. Vice Mayor Hernandez?
I'd like to make a motion, following staff recommendation, to request city council adopt the resolution authorizing appropriation of $52,000 Impact Fee Fund to conduct a feasibility test.
I'll second that.
There's a motion before us. Any discussion on the motion?
I think it's a good move to move forward. I think that we just need to make sure that we have everything cinched up with regarding the funds at that point, instead of moving forward without having the closure of the big amount of money that this project is going to take. And hopefully, we can leverage that with the grants and the other philanthropic folks that are out there willing to put some money to help with this project as well.
I also think this is going to be a great opportunity for our Ramsey Park area. I know that those fields are heavily used, so to be able to expand the capacity, to be able to serve both children and adults, enjoying the outdoors is just keeping in, in line with a lot of what we've been pushing forward here. Also, with the renovations of the Ramsey Park, it's just great to see the continued investment and opportunities for young people and adults alike to be able to continue to enjoy city resources.
Seeing no additional discussion, I do believe that we're ready to vote. All right, Erwin?
Billisich? Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Dodge?
Yes.
Hurst? Montesino?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Cervantes?
Yes. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much for your presentation. Before we recess into our closed session, we do want to provide members of the public wishing to comment on our closed session agenda. Seeing none, I will recess to closed session, and we will return at 6:30.